In accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-80E, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media in the media area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer, Mr. Govan, followed by the pledge led by Ms. Kelly.
Good.
Prayer first.
Oh, the prayer. Okay. I was a fan of you, so I might use you.
Father, here's again God that we come to ask you. For your guidance and your direction as we conduct the business of the Darlington School District Board. We ask that it would be pleasing in your sight. We ask, God, if we will make decisions in the businesses of our children and the citizens of Darlington County and this country. This we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Will move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens' comments?
No.
We've got our items, our July board minutes, and a motion to approve.
Second?
Second. All in favor? All right. Moves on to our awards and honors. I guess we'll do Mr. Sch.
Well, it's going to be Mr. Miller stepping in for Mr. Schuler for our all-state softball player.
That's right. Madam Chair members of the board, I'm honored to stand in for Eddie Schuler tonight to recognize Ms. Mary Ellen Hickey. She's a member of the Harpschool High School Student Athlete Athletic Club and the South Carolina Coaches Association. Miss Hickey, she's a member of the 2024 All-State Softball Team. And the administration recommends a big knowledge search. Our local coaches here tonight, Mrs., come on up, Coach, and Mary Ellen. Congratulations.
How are you?
Good.
Not at all?
Thank you.
Good.
All right. One more. Two more.
Thank you.
And we have our board recognitions. We have...
All right. So the next item on the list is our South Carolina School Board Association.
And I will take the question. So as Audrey said, I was the lead auditor. I was also accompanied by my colleague Susan Bowing, who took me... We definitely do this work as a team, so even though you all saw me in person, we've had a whole team of people working on it. Melissa Graham, the associate director, does a very thorough review. She has input into the report, asked communicators who build the best relationships with their community. So I just want to acknowledge that and say that it's not an easy thing to have somebody going through all of your... Also, the second goal was to provide customized recommendations that are based on the data that we recovered, that we discovered through the surveys and are based on strategies and best practices that will help you build and improve on your part communication. Afterwards, as we were going through all of our data, we also reviewed other data that was provided by Audrey and that we discovered in our own research. This included demographic data, strategic plan, communications plan, news coverage. We looked at your board policies. So there was really a wide range of information that was considered. We also conducted the Scope Survey, and the Scope Survey is a proprietary product of Esper. It's nationally benchmarked. So one of the benefits of doing the survey, well, we're able to customize some of the questions. Many of the questions are benchmarked against about 130 other districts that have taken the survey nationally, and so that allows you to see how you're doing compared to other districts. The survey questions are aligned with what we call our rubrics of best practice, and so we're really trying to get at how is your district doing compared to what we know works in other districts. This is a set of quantitative data that you get from your results, and that is used hand in hand with the qualitative data that we gather during the focus group and interview process while we're in town. So you had good participation in your survey. We set a target of a 5% margin of error, and you came very close to that, with 5.5% for faculty, staff, and 5.6% for parents and families. We set a target of 10% for community because it's always hard for every one of our clients to get community members to participate. And while you fell a bit short of the target, we did feel like we got enough responses to give us some reliable quantitative data. And one thing I want to point out, because I'm very cognizant that I'm talking to a school board, and you're used to looking at polling data if you're going out for a finance election, and the margin of error for a survey like this has a slightly different meaning than it might for an election where success or failure for a ballot measure might hinge on a one- or two-point margin of error difference. This type of survey is a little bit different. This is going to be used more for Audrey to set some benchline goals and strategies, and a swing of a couple of points isn't going to fundamentally change what she does with the information. So I wanted to just make sure that you understood that. When we came to town back in April, we conducted focus groups with a wide variety of stakeholders, both external and internal. We talked to principals. We talked to teachers, support staff. And when we had employees in groups, we made sure that nobody who was in a focus group was in a group with somebody that they reported to, and this is to ensure that people feel a sense of safety to share honestly with us. And we did, in fact, feel like we got some really, really great feedback from all of the groups we talked to. We also conducted interviews with Dr. Newman, with Audrey, and with Chris, and with several of you, and these were more in-depth conversations where we were able to dig deep and probe. The focus groups were conducted after the Scope Survey, so the Scope Survey results helped us to know what we wanted to ask. So now I'm going to spend the next few slides just touching on the key findings. I hope you've all had a chance to at least glance at the full report. I know it's quite lengthy. In that report, there are detailed charts and graphs and narratives that describe all the findings. So what I'm going to do tonight is really just touch on the big points, but certainly at the end, if you have questions, you can ask me about anything that's in the report. So the first question that is asked of your stakeholders is, what is the overall perception of Darlington County schools? And in your case, 64% of parents, 71% of employees, and 40% of communities rate your district as excellent or above average. Now, I know sometimes when I present numbers like that, you might wish that they were higher, and that's certainly a great goal. However, I do want to point out that your numbers were above the national average. Sadly, in many districts, we would like these numbers to be higher. So you're doing fine, and the numbers look good, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that on the next page. When it comes to overall satisfaction with communication, also, the numbers are excellent. 74% of your parents, 68% of employees, and 60% of community members rate satisfaction with communication as excellent or above average. And again, these were higher than the national average, in some cases significantly so. So one very interesting thing, and I want to pause here and make sure that you hear this as I talk about some of the strengths overall of all of the data. One is that your communication team excels at sharing information with parents and employees. We really heard nothing but positive feedback about Audrey and Chris and the important work they do. But here's where I want to just stop for a minute. In the Scope Survey, which is nationally benchmarked, as I mentioned, there's 85 different data points that we measure, and DCSD scored above the national average in 84 out of 85 measures of the Scope Survey, and I've never seen that before. I've been doing this for about two years now. So congratulations on that. Even though there are clear areas where there's room for improvement, and I'm going to talk about that, it's really important to have the context to understand that in this time, every school district is probably not where they want to be in terms of satisfaction with Other strengths, you have a very highly competent and caring communication team, and that came through loud and clear in every single focus group. So much appreciation expressed for the efforts that are made in your district to keep parents, employees, and the community informed. I also noticed that there was a high awareness among your stakeholders of the academic strengths and opportunities that are available, and that is also a sign that communication is effective. If there's an understanding that there are many opportunities out there, and employees and parents know about them, that means communication is working well. Now, as we're going to talk about a little bit later, where there is some room for improvement is a bit of a gap between the way that the community perceives things and the way that employees and parents do, and we will talk about that in a little bit. I also saw as a strength that you, the board, and your superintendent really value excellent communication, and you're willing to invest in it, and that's not always something that's true, so I commend you for that. In terms of areas of challenge, the current communications plan is a very adequate plan, but it's not based on research, and that's because you didn't have research until you did the Scope Survey. So Audrey was very wise to recognize the importance of basing a plan on research, which is why she recommended putting this whole process in play. The investment that you made in this audit is going to make it possible for the communications team to create a very targeted plan that is really aimed at those areas that showed up as areas of challenge. You know, as I just mentioned, I would say one of the key findings was the gap in perception between the stakeholders who have direct experience with your district and those who are further up outside, your business leaders, or your community members who no longer have children in the school system. Another just comment that I want to make is while you exceeded the national averages in almost every area, we did notice in the comments, the open-ended comments in the Scope Survey and a little bit in some of the comments that were made in the focus groups, that there is room for improvement in the area of trust, and that's another thing we'll talk about a little bit later. Another area of challenge, and I think some of you talked to us about this when I was in Darlington conducting in-person interviews, that there's negative coverage right now out there just about the public school system in general, and that's something that's led to some negative perceptions locally, and I just want to acknowledge that and say that I agree with you that that is true, and that's a factor. So it's an area of challenge. It's a bit out of your control, but not completely out of your control, as I'll talk about a little bit later. We also noticed that while the communications team was lauded for putting information out, there were some snags in other areas of the organization that aren't overseen by communication. So maybe the way information flows from department to department, which is not something that is done by the communications team, but when it comes to internal communication, that's where we noticed a few little hitches. And again, the report does address that. We also heard a little bit about delays in information getting out, and you know, again, there are reasons for that, and maybe some of it's unavoidable, but we do offer some strategies for addressing it. I just want to share a few other things that I would say are neither strengths nor weaknesses, but just observations that I had as I reflected upon the findings and the recommendations that we're giving you. One is that I really believe that if you execute a highly targeted plan that's based on research, you are going to build on the current success. You are going to see improvement. And if you were to repeat the survey in a few years, the goal would be for the numbers to go up and for it to have a really, to have the strategies help you attain some really solid gains. I also want to point out that there are some broad societal trends that I saw in Darlington that I see in other districts that I've audited. I should have mentioned that earlier, that I wore Audrey's shoes for about 11 years working for a similar-sized district. So I have direct experience working for a school district, and I've been conducting audits for Esper for about three or four years now, so I've audited eight districts, and I, you know, read audits of many of our district clients. So a lot of the things that are areas of challenge for you are things that every school district is facing right now, and these include things like migration patterns, that people moving to, you know, city centers more. Also, the reliance on school rating systems is enormous, and it's something that is often overlooked, that so many young families, when they're moving into a community, they turn to GreatSchools.com or to Niche.com. They're really looking for that 1 to 10 rating, and those ratings can be misleading and can feel quite unfair, and yet it's not something that you have direct control over. You can't change the number, but you can change some of the other information that's listed on the sites, and that's part of what we recommend in the recommendations. I also really believe that if you do some enhanced outreach to your community, you can close this gap that currently exists between the perceptions of parents and staff and perceptions of the broader community. Building a district-wide culture of communication where everybody feels that they are a communicator and are responsible for communication, that is also going to help those areas of internal communication that showed up a little bit lower than optimal. And last, you know, perceptions of trust and secrecy, again, is something that I often see when I'm auditing school districts, and some of this is very easily addressed just by adopting some really simple two-way communication strategies. So with that, I'm going to talk about each of the top line. These are the six broad areas of recommendation that are included in the report. Each one of these six steps includes a number of specific action steps, which I will review. I'm going to not talk about every single action step because we don't have enough time to do that, so I'll focus on one or two for each slide. So these are really a big-picture representation, and they are presented in what we would consider the order of importance. So you know, step number one is almost always going to be to update the communication plan. And in your case, we put elevating the perception of DCSD schools through marketing and branding. We made that number two because we saw that as really your top and most pressing need. But really, it's up to Audrey and Dr. Newman to determine you might decide to implement these in different orders. So with that, I will just briefly review. I already talked about this a little bit, but now that you have data from the Scope Survey and the findings from the focus groups, you really have the ability to enhance the communication plan. We're recommending that you add a research section to it and that you provide an evaluation. And by evaluation, what I'm talking about is if 69% today view the schools as excellent and above average, perhaps you set a goal that you wanted to be 75% in two years. So you know, setting those kinds of measurable objectives are the kinds of things that we're talking about there. For recommendation two, elevating the brand of your schools through branding, marketing, and storytelling, this has the largest section of the report devoted to it. It's really front and center, and we include the largest number of action steps for this recommendation. So I know, and I was so pleased to see that you're already thinking about redoing your logo. I saw that as in Audrey's goals, I think, for next year, so we really commend you for that. And doing a comprehensive branding is going to include, you know, creating a new logo, having taglines. Taglines are sort of like slogans. So for example, in the district I worked for, our tagline was "Me Choose Love," RCSD, which was the district I worked for. So it's just something that kind of goes under your logo and reinforces your value system. Photos. A big part of the branding is going to be getting really high-quality photos out there of your students. You know, the saying goes, "A picture paints a thousand words," and that is so true. So that was a recommendation that we put very high. Now I'd like to talk just a little bit about, in more detail, about Great Schools and Niche. So as I mentioned, these ratings are done by algorithms, and both of these companies are quite secret about it, so you really can't go in there. They take your state test scores, but you don't get to, you don't get input into that, and you don't get input into how they use them. But what you do have input into is encouraging your parents to write reviews, in claiming those pages, and I know from talking to Audrey that she has already started working on this. But for each school in your district, you can list activities, you can list features of the school, you can encourage your parents, who are happy customers, to write reviews. And I can tell you that all the parents that I talked to love the schools their kids go to. There wasn't any parent who complained. So that's a real asset that you have that can really be pumped up. So if a school's, you know, numeric rating is a little lower, maybe it's made up for by that testimonial from a parent who is so thrilled that their child is there. And yeah, we have some other recommendations that I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about. You can read about them in the report, but I will just say also printed marketing materials are something that we think are often overlooked but can be quite effective because people are so much overloaded with electronic information these days. Recommendation three is really aimed at closing that gap between the broader community and your district, and we offer a number of ideas in this section. I'll just talk about one, which would be an outreach program to real estate agents, and that is linked with the Great Schools and Niche section that I just talked about. Real estate agents lean really heavily on these ratings as well, and so getting real estate agents, you know, more familiar with your schools, able to speak in a really informed way about your schools is extremely helpful. And the other one I want to highlight in this section is to talk about employees. Now, one of the things that we noticed is that your employees love working for your district. Very positive things to say. There's a really true belief in the mission. Teachers really believe in the students. They believe students are getting a good education. So the question then is, how do you leverage that? And you know, part of it is helping all employees to think of themselves as communicators. So just to give you a little factoid... So just to give you a little factoid here, of the employees who took the survey, 63% of them said that they think they have 1 to 15 interactions per week with stakeholders, and 16% said that they have more than 16 per week. So that means you're having, you know, thousands, 3,000 to 7,000 interactions between your staff and the community every week, and that's outside of anything that Chris and Audrey are doing. So we think there's really an opportunity there to leverage that for building up the perception. Recommendation four is around social media, and also I know in this area, this is something that Chris is hard at work at already, and we just offer some suggestions in the section for ways to bump it up, maybe to make it more effective, and we really lean on best practices that we've learned from other districts who are Esper members, and so we really hope that that section is helpful in making your social media even that much more strategic. Recommendation five is around internal communication. A lot of the ideas in this section are just very practical things, like having information flow trees, so that everybody in the organization knows who's responsible for getting information out, so that there's never a question, "Am I the one who's supposed to say that," or "Is it somebody else?" I think it's very clear, the things that the comms department does, but what we noticed is a little bit more uncertainty once you get down to that next layer that Audrey and Chris are not overseeing. And last, to increase transparency and trust by focusing on two-way communication. So one of the things that we heard, and again, just so you know and have some context, I hear this very often with school districts, but a sense that we provide information, we take surveys, but we never hear the end results. So we really encourage, when you do a survey, to share the results back out, to be really transparent about the outcome of this communication audit, which you are doing right now by presenting the results in a public meeting. And we offer some suggestions in the actual report about how to get feedback from employees outside of the survey process. Sometimes people feel a little bit of survey fatigue, and so there are some other ways that you can gather input that are outlined in the report. So last, I want to just say that this is not a one-year program. So we've given you, oh gosh, what is it, a 77-page report. This cannot be implemented in one year. We consider this a two-to-three-year effort, and what you're going to have to do is now that you have this, to really go through it, chew on it, decide what the priorities are, pick what you want to do, and then chip away at it a little bit at a time. So two or three top things you want to do for this next year. And yeah, I think just viewing it as a long-term effort is the point that I really want to make here. It's just not an overnight change. And also, I think one thing that I want to say, because there are some gaps in perception, that that is also a longer-term thing. Sometimes it's like turning a big ship, and it's not as if you're going to go overnight from low awareness of all the great things going on in your school to high awareness. But as you start to do things, you'll start to get more momentum, and you'll start to see attitudes shift. So that is the end of the presentation. I will stop screen sharing and open this up to questions, but I can certainly put the slides back up if you want me to refer back to anything specific.
Anybody have any questions? What comments?
Sounds like Audrey's and her team doing a great job. Like anything else, it's always good for some improvement, but congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I always have a question. I would just ask is, maybe you can't answer this question right now, but whether Audrey or whether you, just as a board, what can we, we need to make sure that you're letting us know what we can do as board members, and maybe do you have any observations or anything where, how a good board can influence that perception in the community? Have you seen examples in your work? Is there an expectation there that the board is participating in this plan, I guess?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing, so I wasn't sure if you were addressing that to me or to Audrey, but I think I gathered from my question that you're asking what the board's role is in ensuring that the...
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I think step number one is just what you're already doing, being willing to take a look at it and being willing to hear the honest feedback. That's a really hard thing to do, so that's a huge step right there. I think, you know, just supporting the audit process was a big help to Audrey. I think secondly, what the board really can do is make sure that the communications team has the resources they need. And from everything I saw, that is the case. You have an adequately-staffed department, you have the tools that you need. I would suggest that Audrey have the opportunity on a very regular basis to check in with the board and let them know where she's making progress in some of these areas, to, you know, not lose sight. And again, this is a really big plan, it'd be really easy to get overwhelmed by it, so I would say that the board can be really supportive just by helping to understand how it's getting broken down into achievable chunks. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, not really a question, just a statement, that as a board member, we do appreciate when these audits are done, because it lets us know where we really are. And I thank Audrey and Chris for what they have done to show us our strengths, and to also let us know where we need to meet some of these challenges. And we're going to try to work with you. I appreciate your work.
Thank you. And we're going to be at the work session presenting more action plans based on the information that we've got today.
Awesome. Thank you.
Audrey and Chris, thank you very much for the name, and thank you all so much for what you did. It was a very thorough report, thank you for sending it out for our preview prior to the meeting. Always enjoy, appreciate that one before. I think that does it for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions, I just want to make sure I understand that before I sign off.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chris, I sent you an email with the... She's already... Perfect. Awesome.
All right, and that brings us up to our report on our Cognia accreditation report. Dr. Newman's going to take that one for us, along with our academic, chief academic officer, Dr. Nichols.
All right, well, thank you, Chair Haslam, members of the board, and members of our audience. We recently received our Cognia accreditation review. Of course, this is a once every five years that we go through, and I'm going to see if we get pulled up on the screen here. There we go. Awesome. I also have a printed handout. We sent the full report to you all earlier in the week, but again, it is a 37-page document, and tonight is just a summary of what that was. And so I'm going to keep opening, just in case you have any questions, but I'll flip the button over there. Again, Cognia is once every five years, and we really tried to have this done at the same time we did our strategic plan, so we can incorporate a lot of the same information from the strategic planning process, as well as Cognia. And if you'll flip to page two, there we go. So the scoring's based on a four-point system, so everything that you see in that document is based on four points. And then, look at... Yep. There we go. And so the first part, the first few slides that you're going to see here is what the district submits, saying that this is what we think we are, okay? And so this, and it's all stakeholders, so we have many different groups that were part of this process. And so when you look at, there was stakeholder feedback, there was student performance analysis and learning environment. We had to submit, like, lots of documents to Cognia for this information. And then we had to say where we felt like we were as a district on this. And so the first couple of slides are the district's feedback and what we felt. And then the last few slides are actually what Cognia, they took the information and they gave us their, you know, thoughts on our schools and everything. So the first three were stakeholder feedback analysis, again, and where it says, the Dalton County School District, 3.8, the network average was 3.1, okay? And so we were at 3.8, 3.1. Student performance analysis, four, Cognia 3.1, and then the learning environment analysis, 3.3. And then, again, continuing with that kind of self-assessment that we had, culture of learning is another standard that's there, leadership of learning, engagement of learning, and growth in learning. Again, this is all based on documents that we pulled together and submitted, and you see the averages for the Cognia network as well. Okay? Now, we move into what they actually looked at when they assessed all of our data and information as well. And so culture of learning.
And to be noted that it was virtual, that they didn't come on-site. It's a virtual, so they didn't come on-site. So when they did interviews, it was all done virtually, so just to know that. In the past, with Advanced Ed, they would come on-site. So just with COVID, that changed, and so they moved to that virtual.
A real big, probably stupid question here, but so, Cognia? Who is Cognia? Why do we, why are we being assessed by them, and under what regulation?
So that's the old, the new name for Advanced Ed.
Okay.
And that is who gives us our accreditation that says, you know, that we're, our diplomas are real diplomas.
The same group, same thing we've already done.
Same group, different name.
Yeah, they've changed like three times in the past three rounds that we've done this, but that's a good question.
So is it comparable to previous audits, or previous?
It is.
So it's using the same...
Yep, the scoring.
Same criteria and everything.
Same building and...
It's where we used to meet with them at a location, around tables and... Yes, yeah. So Jamie, to your point, this was all done in person before. Remember, we used to pick them up and, you know, take them to all the schools, and you all would meet with them? Everything was done in person. It's all done virtually now. So it is a little different dynamic when you're trying to explain, or they're trying to see, the things that are in your district. You know, we didn't have all those people coming in and getting a chance to tour around the schools and everything like we used to. But culture of learning, just a couple bullet points there. Healthy culture is evident where stakeholders are actively engaged, learners' academic and non-academic needs and interests are the focal point, and stakeholders are included. And again, they gave us a rating of 3.3 out of 4 on this. The leadership of learning?
Leadership of learning is demonstrated when school leaders are communicating expectations with their learners, they influence, impact culture in positive ways, model, engage, and learning while supporting others to do so, and our rating that they gave us was a 3.1.
And engagement of learning, which is where all learners are included in the learning process, participate with confidence, and have agency over their learning. And we were 2.9, and this will come back in recommendations they have for us. So this is where, how are kids actually engaged and in control of the learning process that we have in the district? And that is actually going to be one of the recommendations for improvement.
Can I just, how do you evaluate that over Zoom?
It's tough. It is. You're basically trying to pull data together that shows that you include students in the whole process of their learning, and...
So they're not actually evaluating students in a learning environment to see if they are engaged?
No, but they do, I would assume that this is the same, that they pick, would get certain students, they interview those students in a focus group, they ask a set questions, and the way the students respond, then they're looking for a certain criteria, because all this is on a four-point rubric.
And there are different groups that do this, other than Cognia. Or is Cognia the one that does it all for the state districts, all for the national districts? All South Carolina school districts are Cognia at this point in time, and they do have other states where they're the only... But other states do different groups, but are we required by our state? We are. But that's, and other states may or may not be, and they're comparing to other districts. In our state, across the world. Across the world. Whatever schleg group they may be doing, across the world.
So South Carolina Department of Education chose Cognia as the accreditation...
Entity.
...rubric.
Yep.
Entity.
Yep.
Okay.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
And it used to be Advanced Ed, and it used to be SACS.
Okay.
So that's that iteration there.
But we don't really know the quality of this, in that it's virtual, it is Zoom.
Yeah.
And we're paying for this, correct?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Those are good questions. Growth in learning, learning is evident when learner possesses non-academic skills and ensure readiness to learn, learners' academic achievement reflects preparedness to learn, and then learners obtain knowledge and skills necessary to achieve goals for learning, and we achieved a 3.0. Again, I have a 4.0 scale.
All right, so we get to the noteworthy practices, and these are what I mentioned at our convocation, all right? So we actually had two noteworthy practices, which are things that we're doing really well as a district, that they acknowledged. Again, the last time we went through this process, we didn't have any. So it was great to be able to have two noteworthy practices. Again, leaders actively engage stakeholders to support the district's mission, vision, and core values that are focused on student well-being and academic growth and improvement. The inclusive, continuous improvement process gathers input from a wide array of stakeholder groups. Programs, practices, and services maintain a focus on students' non-academic and academic well-being. So this all goes back to, we try to get as much feedback as we can. We try to interact with as many user groups as we can, you know, our business community that we're doing with our key to career and our workforce development pieces. And again, just actively engaging with students, trying to find out how they feel about what we're doing as well. So what they're saying is, is that they can tell that our principals, our schools are really focused on, hey, how can we do a better job with this, with our parents, with our community, and with our students? And so as a system, that's important, that we're showing that. And then the other noteworthy practice is, is based on data, that we're using data for every key decision that we're making, which is what we should be. So using a wide variety of data sources and information, leaders make informed decisions that foster students and staff members' growth and well-being. Data analysis includes the use of data from student performance, stakeholder surveys, historical collections, and social and emotional student surveys to guide decision-making in setting improvement goals and developing and implementing initiatives aligned with the guiding principles of the district. That's a whole lot of words to say that we're really focused on, what is the data to back up what we're doing? And, you know, the things that are working in this district, you know, we need to be able to say, because of the data, that's why we're doing them, why we need to continue to do them, and the things that may not be showing us results, we need to make decisions on those too, so. But again, they heard that loud and clear in all the information we provided them, and then they did some user group as well, so they were able to talk with our, some of a sample of principals that are in the room, you know, the sampling of parents, the sampling of students. They got that, hey, Dalton County School District is focused on data to make decisions, so. And then with that, there's some areas of improvement, a couple areas of improvement. So I'll let Dr. Nichols kind of take over on this one.
All right, so design, implement, and monitor comprehensive processes to evaluate all programs, to improve the instruction and advanced learning. And so some of the thoughts in the advancement of how can we attack this, strategies, is to use that model of data-driven decision-making through school-based discussions, following the PLC model, which many of our schools are doing, but tightening up on that. And we'll be working with the principals in August and September in the progress monitor check, and December, January, and then progress monitor check where we are in April and May. And those are following benchmark dates, so that's why those dates were chosen.
So can I ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. So that's really vague, like, design, implement, and monitor comprehensive processes to evaluate all programs.
It is.
So what are they, are they asking that you, so we have data, they want you to monitor the data better, they want you to follow it?
Yes.
And have...
Yep. So, they have, they say we have everything in place where we're looking at the data, but how are we applying that to every program that we have?
So-
Right? Whether it be a software program, whether it be a human resources and people program, like interventionist, for example. To be sure that we have a consistent process in place.
So, don't just make the decision and move on, like, continue to monitor is what they're, is what you think they're going after here? Okay. And when they say all programs, are we focused on academic programs? Are we talking about, we use that HR, we're talking about?
I want to say HR, personnel. So, again, we could have a software program.
Oh, this is, this is related to?
It could be both.
Oh, it could be anything?
Yeah, so, two examples. Software that we use to help, you know, build capacity with our students, whether it be interventions or acceleration. You know, are they working? Right? So, it's one thing for a teacher to use a software. We use a program and say, hey, it's great, you know, we think it's working, but what is the data set? Right?
I think I get it.
So, and then the same thing with people. What programs do we have in place where we're utilizing personnel? You know, again, it's one thing to say, I think they're doing a great job.
So, that's the instruction?
Yes.
Okay.
That fidelity, are we really doing what we said we're doing?
Okay. All right, great, thank you for going into that a little bit.
And then the other one?
All right, so the other one is formalized processes to promote student voice and self-directed learning. And so, the strategies for improvement are the superintendent's creating a student cabinet, ownership of student growth and progress monitoring, and student tracking of data and growth targets. We know that research says that when students set their own goals, their learning goals, and they know where they are, and then they can, you know, so how long will it be here by the next thing? They have those growth goals that are based on their learning, that the long-term goal is going to be that they will all, you know, they're going to meet their goals and move forward, and they feel like they have a voice in their learning versus the teacher just said, I had to get X number right, or I had to read so many books, or whatever. It's based on individualized and personalized learning.
And I think the new, you know, SC Ready and the growth goals that they have are based on the individual student. That's helpful. But more importantly, even, you know, MAP, and then also formative assessments. Just making sure that our students are kind of very much guiding their process as we're guiding them as well, that they have ownership in it, and that they have a stake in it as well. Otherwise, the relevance piece, right? It's got to be relevant. You can't say, take this test, and you need to make this score because you need to take this test. You know, you have to show the relevance about what we're trying to help them with to be successful and why they need to do that. And again, they need as big a voice in that as they can, so.
So, when do we report back to them, let them know what we're doing?
So, they will ask us for this response, and so we'll respond back to them within the next couple months. And then every year, there's an update to the CAGDIA process. So, because it's, you know, once every five years, you actually give a yearly update to say, you know, here's where we are along the process. So, there are benchmarks throughout the five years that we have to actually report back to them.
Charles, do you have a question?
No, I think you answered that. I was going to ask. Is, so they're still doing it on the five-year annuals?
I have a question. So, I know, you know, I'm barely new to this world. I participated as a parent in the last round of Advanced Ed or whatever in those focus groups and stuff. I have a little bit of understanding of this, but now as a board member, I'm looking at this, and I'm like, this is very academic data-focused. Is that, is that correct? Because I know in our strategic plan, we really talked about trying to add metrics to other things that we do. That, you know, like, how do you measure success for our students in other ways than just testing?
That's right.
You know, so, because there's so much more to their success, whether it's our trade programs, whether it's the internship program, whether it's sports and arts and all their things. And so, I know this is driven by the state. But is, other than our strategic plan, is there any place that you can? I mean, how can you? I want to show that value. I mean, is there any place that we can show that value? Other than communication and trying to share those stories? Like, does the state care at all? I mean, do they ever, I mean, well, that's the wrong word. Does the state measure that? Is there anywhere that the state's measuring other things besides academic testing?
So, that's a hard thing to capture, to measure, right?
It is, it is.
I mean, to measure a child's, you know, that went from day one to day 180 and had no social skills, couldn't socialize, couldn't interact with others, and now by the end of the year has friends, how are you going to measure that on a test? That's a complicated answer. So, no, there's not a particular measurement for that particularly.
I had heard-
However, the college and career ready, that is one way they try to measure some of those things. You can measure them by, you know, how many students you have that make it to whatever level of different organizations. But when it comes down to-
Participation and-
Yeah. When it comes down to state report card, those are kind of the things that falls under, and parent perception of the school districts.
I know, and so there's some surveys on those, like, environmental, like, the school environment type things. That's where they're trying to get at that maybe? Because I feel like I remember hearing something about the state trying to, like, made the Department of Education at one point trying to look into other ways of, more creative ways of measuring some of those things, but I don't know. There's not really, that's not any, there's no movement there.
The lion's share of the points on the report card are based on the test scores.
Right. And so, I just think you, I mean, I'll just, the last thing I'll say, for anybody listening, for parents out there, right, and you go, why am I kid getting tested all the time? They're so sick of tests, you know? It's because what you measure is what, where do you go? So, I appreciate your leadership in trying to measure other things, and trying to communicate, and trying to put value toward our business community and those kinds of things that you're not getting measured for in this accreditation, and that doesn't go into our school report cards. So, thank you for your leadership in pursuing those things, even though they don't reflect it here. So, thank you.
That's right. Any other questions?
Do I have a question that you want to use for it? Have you dealt with it?
So, I'm going to ask for my principals to help me with that.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, the question is, for the student cabinet that we're putting together, the high school student cabinet, we're actually, you know, Audrey and I were talking about how other districts do this. And so, the principals, we'll ask for recommendations from the principals. And so, each high school principal will select, you know, a diverse group of students that represent the voice of the school. And they'll probably rotate off, like, we'll start with juniors and seniors. We're talking about maybe having five per school. And then there'll be a group that rotates off, or bring another group in, so. But I'm going to depend on our principals to kind of help. Because I will know those students necessarily. But we want to make sure to hear the voice of the school, right? And the voice is not one person. It's not one group. You know, it's not this group, it's, everybody should be able to have that voice and be represented, so.
Really excited about that.
Yes.
Because kids will tell you like it is. They don't care, they don't care who you are, they're going to tell you. And I have teenagers, so I think the teenagers today are amazing.
Yes.
And I hope that that's really great, so I'm very excited that you're doing that.
Charles, Doc?
Dr. Nichols, does this process, I know it's different for the SAC evaluations. So, do you get a better feel, I guess, I won't say outcome, but a better feel from this process than we have? Because in the past, we've been used to having the SAC evaluations, and Jamie alluded to the person-to-person. And I, because of my position, I know that there are other districts where we went through SAC, went through this evaluation also recently. So, I'm just wondering, has there been any conversation about comparison?
Yeah, there really isn't. I mean, it is-
I mean, something you can do about it, I get that.
Advanced Ed is, you know, is pretty much CAGDIA. I mean, you know, they change names, but it's the same scale.
Same thing, yeah.
That they have. But, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we have a flag, we have a CAGDIA flag, and we have a letter that says that we've been accredited, so.
Well, they'll, next week, did you get your flag?
We've got the flag.
You know, it seems like every time you turn around, we're being evaluated by some third-party entity, and I'd like to spend more time focusing and answering and providing information to these third parties when we could be spending time in the classrooms. I just wonder how valuable is this, and how mandatory is this, and how does it compare? But again, I think it's so subjective, and when you're sending them information, doing some interviews, but you talk about data-driven, what can be driving this? And we do internal evaluations, we have goals internally where we want to progress. And just like, I hate to say it, but I mean, here we go again, it's another process. Do you find this of any help or just more work?
Well, we have to be accredited, but we have to be accredited.
Is this a requirement of every district? You're saying-
It is a requirement for every district in the state of South Carolina.
Well, I hate to say it, it can replace something that we're doing, because again, I feel like we're repeating ourselves, and again, we spend, administrators and everybody, time doing this.
And so, we do have a score. And so, it's out of 400, and so, we scored 3.25. And the average across all of the districts that they work with is 2.53. To put a little bit of perspective on that, we were at 3.10 the last time we went through this process, five years ago. So, we've actually increased, you know, 15 points. So, again, we have more points, we have a flag, and we have a letter saying that we are accredited.
I love to review my answers with the state, what theirs.
I hate to say it, enough, we'll get it. Okay? And this is one of the things that we're supposed to do, is to present this at a public school board meeting as well.
I was wondering why, what a work session or something.
To let everybody know that, you know, that we finished the process and we have-
Probably done everything, right?
Yeah.
Good. I was going to, Dr. Nichols. I was going to suggest, at some point, just for the public, to let them see that flag. Just for PR.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
You know, I went to a complication somewhere else, and they used that as a part of their complication. They presented that flag and set up.
Put it on the website.
Yeah, that's right. We can communicate that through, that'll be one of those high-resolution pictures we'll take.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Budget report. We have our budget and the recap on our federal funds, where we are, which September, what's, ESAR funds are in September, what's it? 30. Looks like we are on track for having used all of our ESAR funding. Anybody have any question about those reports, comments? I would like to note that since this was our June 30th closeout date on that financial report, I think it's important to note that, you know, after the complete year, we did fall within our budget. I think it's always important that everyone, you know, we set a budget at the beginning, you know, starts July 1st, and we actually stayed within our budget overall. And I think it's important that we share that information, that we had a good planning process prior to and involved it through, good management throughout the year.
Pending year-end adjustments, but we'll still- All right, and that loses on to our action item, which is our GO bond this year. And, Dr. Newman, would you like to do that? We have Mr. Ziegler, Mr. Carter here.
Yep, we have a couple guests with us, in case we have some questions. Mr. Ziegler, Mr. Carter, thank you for being here. Hansmer, Sinclair, and Boyd, so. And we are asking the board to approve our annual GO bond that we have, which is our 8% monies that we use for capital improvements. This is a little bit different dollar amount this year because per the retreat that we had, if you all remember the board retreat, there was some, we were able to capture some extra money because of the sales tax savings that we had had so far. So, we are recommending a not-to-exceed $17 million GO bond. And, again, this is for, when we say capital improvements? Yeah. And not to exceed 16 and a half, I'm sorry. And this is for technology purchases that we make, but also for capital improvements, large repairs, you know, additions, construction, roofs, all those big-ticket items that we have, so.
This will be paid off in two years?
One year. This is a one year.
Still one year?
Still a one year. And that, that's a good question. We, you know, we had a discussion about possibly doing the two. And, you know, we're in the process of updating our facility study. And so, we kind of felt like we wanted to wait till we get that information. Because, again, I think that'll give us some indication on projects and pricing a little bit more to do that. So, we're able to do that next year as well. But we figured with the extra capacity that we already had, that waiting for that facility study, for the board's information to be able to move forward, that we can look at that two-year next year.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a reminder, so this gets, we, just, this process, this is my second year going through this. So, that's drawn out this fall, and we pay it off in the spring, basically.
We pay it back every year. We do a year, so.
It was originally, or historically, it's been more eight and nine-ish.
Right. Yeah, I know we talked about increasing the amount because of, you know, at the retreat, based on some of the, yep. Okay. Just making sure it's still that process that we're going to-
There's no tax increase to do this.
Right.
There is not.
Yeah. I think it needs to be clear that this is not a tax increase. We were able to-
We need to make sure people here-
Leverage some money that had been saved, basically, right? From sales tax that had been set aside?
Yes.
That we had gained over the last few years and was being set aside. Is that accurate?
That's correct. So, even though the dollar amount is higher, there's actually no tax impact at all.
Right.
The mileage stays the same as what it's been for, I guess, five years now that we've had it at that mileage rate.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion?
We approve the general obligation, Brian. Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Newman, we'll have our, thank you, Mr. Ziegler.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, thank you all so much for being here and taking care of all of that for us. Welcome aboard, Mr. Carter.
He had a bunch of handouts he wants to get ready to give us.
Dr. Newman, our superintendent's update.
Okay, well, so Chair Hasler, members of the board, members of our audience, I am actually doing the superintendent's report, but I'm also utilizing our strategic plan goal areas in my superintendent report moving forward. So, I'll actually be using both of those combined into one. So, for example, a couple of things I want to bring up that involve student success is, of course, we had our best first day ever this year, the kickoff with school. Hopefully, y'all had a chance to see, if you weren't personally in the building, you had a chance to see some pictures out there of what our schools did. Just a lot of great energy, a lot of excitement as we got started with the first day of school. Again, talking with parents and teachers and staff, it seems like the, starting on a Thursday, was good for, not only from the professional development side, but also from the student side, because we were in school for Thursday and Friday, and then we had a weekend. And that seemed to go over really well, so.
Is that what next year, I know we tried to say like a year ahead, next year's, so we're still going to Thursday start?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just seemed, everybody seemed very positive about that. So, that's the first time we've actually started in a midweek in a long time, so.
We did that back when my kids-
It's where an elementary school, and it's really good for the little ones. Because they get tired, really, and the teenagers, because they got to get used to going to bed a decent hour again.
So, yeah, we had a great start. And then, of course, we started the week off last week on Monday, looking for the third-best day ever. And then we started dealing with some weather issues. And as you all know, that we were impacted- And as you all know, that we were impacted, unfortunately, by the weather that came through. We had our two e-learning days. Again, district, no major issues as far as damage or anything like that, and we just picked right back up on Friday, thankfully. So it's good to be back on a Monday starting for our first full week, you know, now's the first full week of school that we're gonna be working with. And then I'm. Glad you didn't even hear from me, how about that? Were you not proud of me? I didn't send you a text, no nasty messages, nothing, I just stayed away. You were on my list, so. Nope, I let it go. You've got my wife following suit now. You've got to be kidding me, you're listening to the same news that he listens to. So, but on that note of starting off school, we also started off with the protocol for cellphones as well, and again, kudos to our staff, our administrators in the buildings, our teachers, our parents, and our students. I think we were all very concerned about what this was gonna look like, and I have to say, everybody I spoke to was very pleased with the way this went to start the school year with, with the cellphones not being allowed to be accessible during the school day. I heard a lot of positive comments, especially from high school staff, saying, you know, it's great seeing kids talking to each other and communicating with each other now, so. And again, I applaud our parents because they were a big part of our, our start this year in helping, you know, our students understand that this is the way it's gonna be moving forward now. So, again, kudos to the principals that are in place here tonight with us, and, but that, that has gone well, and I think that's gonna be very good for, for everybody moving forward. Again, we're waiting for the state to, you know, kind of fill in the gaps a little bit on the policy piece, you know, it's just a protocol for us at this point in time, we'll work on policy as that comes into play. And then also, we started map testing immediately, so our, our map testing goes through the end of this week to assess where our students currently are after the summertime, so we can start putting those growth plans that Dr. Nichols was speaking about, we can start meeting at the school level, we, our principals can meet with their teachers about what are those growth plans for our students. And then SC Ready and EOC scores are gonna be released later on this week, and so they're embargoed currently, but as I spoke earlier, you know, we, we feel comfortable that we have a, a small increase in math, and, you know, we are kind of where we were last year with ELA, and that, that's, this appears to be the state of South Carolina, so we'll wait and see that release when it comes out. At the work session, we'll give a deep dive into the test scores at the end of this month as well. And then as far as staff excellence, wanted to make sure that we gave a shout-out about the adult lunches, that the, we, we did raise the price from $2 to $3 for adults to eat lunch in the district, but actually, the federal amount increased, it's now $5.27. So, you know, we pay $5.27 for an adult meal, and we are charging our employees $3 for that. We were using ESER money to supplement that last year, and so the ESER money went away, we found a way to supplement it again, but again, inflation has hit school lunches like it's hit everything else as well, so. And then talking about the school PLCs that Dr. Nichols mentioned, again, getting ready for those data discussions. We've got principal meeting this week in professional development, and then also wanted to mention to the board that we're gonna try to put together a Teacher of the Year Board Luncheon, so we can have conversation with, you all can have conversation with our Teacher of the Year group about their year and how it's getting started, and maybe some of the things that are top of mind for them. So we'll be looking for a date to try to put together, and I'll get with Chair Hassler to see if we can work something out, decide, you know, what that looks like.
We used to do something similar to that.
Trying to bring it back.
Yeah. And I, I thought it was very helpful.
Yep, trying to bring it back.
It used to be, it was very helpful.
So I think once we can get everybody's schedules and make sure that we have everybody available that can participate, we'll try to set a date for that. As far as community engagement, we had open houses over the past week as well, a lot of our schools had Meet the Teacher Night in open houses, and then also, we're meeting with the Darlington County Progress Workforce Development Group, Education Workforce Development Group this week to talk about the new school year, kicking off the Ascend program with, hopefully, all of our eighth graders, we're trying to get that lined up, as well as putting together a career fair at the end of September that will pull in our students and our schools with our business community. Of course, Key to Career, Shantiflowers is already out there, meeting with the schools and talking to students with, that are in the internship classes, getting them settled. And then the fifth grade program, we've already had a conversation with our elementary schools about setting up some times for our Key to Career high schoolers to come in along with our business community to speak to our fifth graders, so we'll be having that meeting this week. Efficient use of resources, of course, thank you, board, for approving the general obligation bonds that we just talked about, as far as, and then construction update as well. So I know top of mind is artificial turf fields at Darlington High School and Hartsfield High School. So Darlington High School, they are supposed to start laying turf down tomorrow, and that will take place over the next week. So, again, I think I'd mentioned in my board brief that the timing we had set was for the 16th because of the hurricane and the weather we had last week, that pushed us out approximately four to five days. So, still feel comfortable that we'll be ready for the first game, but work is taking place, and you should start seeing some green stuff out at Darlington High School starting tomorrow. It goes quickly once they start, and we hope to do a punch list by, towards the end of next week to be finished and wrapped up, so they'll be able to do what they need to to get ready for their first game and have about a week's time to do that.
What happens if we are not ready? You're saying, you've got to be a backup plan.
You've got to show already, sure.
We, we are gonna be ready, we are gonna be ready. Like I said, we, we will be ready. We've had discussions in the past about what that would look like if we had to swap games, but we feel comfortable that we're gonna be able to hit the mark to be ready. And then as far as Hartsfield, of course, the field's been complete for a while, but the drainage work is what was being held up by the weather this past, but again, that's started back as of today. Duke Power has, was on-site today, so we're really glad to see them. Looks like by the, towards the end of this week, that we should have access to our stadium lights in Hartsfield. Actually got the sound, the, the sound and the Jumbotron working today, so all that's up and running where they're able to reconnect the wires for that, so the scoreboard and the sound system was operational as of today. The lights in the stadium should be operational towards the end of this week, and then the site work will also be completed towards the end of this week as well. We're doing some crushed gravel around the stadium, that's the only thing that we'll be hanging out there until next week, is getting some crush run that's put in there, but as far as the stadium itself and being ready for fans, we should be in good shape for the game, for both games, Darlington High School on the 30th and Hartsfield High School on the 30th. As far as the Blue Street projects that we're working on, the, they've been grading the baseball, the new baseball stadium area and the practice field areas that are out there. Site work's continuing where they, I don't know if y'all have seen, but there's a lot of trees that have been removed out there, a lot of trees that are gone, so that's taken a lot of work on the site work, folks. They're getting ready to start pouring pads for the concession areas for both the city and for the high school stadium, and so work continues on that. And then the new elementary school, this week, they plan on dropping the metal trusses this week to be able to fabricate those and get ready. As soon as they get the trusses up, we can start getting roof, and we can start getting dried in, which is gonna be great. Block walls are continuing, they, they, you know, started at the cafeteria side and are working their way around, so a lot of block is up, a lot of walls are up. They're actually starting this week on the roads that lead to Levensworth, as well as the water and sewer this week.
Didn't they build up some margin initially, I mean, they were working pretty quickly, right, so the weather, we probably gotten ahead of a few weather days here and there.
We did. You know, it was super dry this summer for a while, and they got, they did get ahead, and so even though last week was difficult, I think we're still in a good spot with that. And that's everything that I have for superintendent's update and strategic plan goals area update.
Anybody have any questions, Dr. Newman? All right, board member input, Ms. Gore, we'll start off with you today.
All right. Well, I'd just like to, glad to see everybody, I'm hoping for a good school year, and I'm glad to see that we have set some goals this year. We are coming back with a high expectancy, that great things are gonna happen this year for us. I'm glad to see the, I want to thank the employees who, who have come back and those who have received promotions, and, and we thank the employees who have retired and move on to other things. We appreciate what you have done for the Darlington County School District. I was very impressed, Audrey, with your audit, thank you for, thank you for that good audit, so we know our weaknesses and what we need to do to make things better. I appreciate that. Want to thank the young lady, the all-state softball team. I used to play softball too, I loved softball when I was a young lady. I was a, I was a mean second baseman, I played softball, so thank her for winning that all-state softball team. I want to, to congratulate my fellow school board members who also got their two-year, I mean, second-level pin and certificate, because we want our constituent, our constituents to know that we are out here learning more and more every day, and we're trying to be, become great school board members, so that we can be great for the teachers and the principals and, and everyone here, that we're just not sitting here, but we're learning and we're learning process and the learning laws that apply to the school district. And I thank everybody for coming, that's who's here. Thank you, Ms. Nichols, Dr. Nichols, appreciate you, thank you for standing up tonight and, and doing your presentation. I know you was kind of a little nervous your first time, but you did a good job, you did a job. We're all here to help each other, right? Okay, so I'm looking for a good year this year. I'm really looking to see those new football fields, because when I go to other schools and I see all that turf and it's so pretty, so I'm looking for Darlington and Hartsfield to have the same, the same thing. And, Dr. Newman, I enjoyed the school law conference this year, learned a lot of new things, so that's why it's good to go, because you learn different things. We've learned the different legislations that were passed, and he already, Dr. Newman already talked about the, the cellphone system, but there were some other things, probably some issues that we're gonna come, you know, with the book banning and other things that we're gonna have to deal with this year. We're gonna have to make some hard, tough decisions on some things, but I'm just glad to see everybody, I'm glad to see everybody in good health, and, and thank everybody for what they do for the Darlington County School District, and this is gonna be a great year, a great year. And, Mr. Dr. Miller, I didn't congratulate you for being on, you know, one of the area superintendents, I didn't know it till I was someplace in the, announce your title. So congratulations for your hard work, so thank you so much. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Kelly?
I have this.
Mr. Morpheus?
One, when we have guests, I know we talked about this before, to have either short presentations or whatever, kind of before our business stuff and presentations, it'd be nice if they put them ahead, whether it be these guys, architects, whatever, and we talked about that in the past, wait till later on, tonight was short, so it's no big deal, but I want to reiterate or emphasize a priority, we talk about putting our kindergarten back in our home schools, I just keep hearing things and hearing things, we talk about our enrollments, yes, we have a lot of things, a lot of factors playing into our enrollment decrease from COVID to private to whatever the other alternatives have been since COVID, I get it, but we have to take responsibility, and it is also some perception of us, which rolls into applauding Audrey and inviting criticism, I mean, that's great, and let's take it and go with it. I've always thought we had great communication, thought they'll do a great job, sure they'll find something wrong, you don't want them doing without that, not wrong, but there is improvement, so to use that to help promote who we are and what we are to try to improve our enrollment, but also, I, I hear a lot of, once you start, as you know, in one area, you generally stay, okay, well, if I'm not happy with the middle school, and I'm not going to our kindergarten, then when I go to elementary, then I gotta move again, I'm switching too much. So once they go into one environment, they're probably gonna stay, it's hard pulling them out of that. So I just say, I know we, we've looked at it, ways to do it, when we did Bay Road, we almost had an opportunity to be able to move things out, but if we can get back and revisit, when you're saying you're still looking at our, our long-term capital plan, how do we do that? What's it look like? We beat it around for, for years, literally, and how do we afford it? And is it the best thing? Yeah, it might be best, and I truly think it'd have an impact on enrollment, because once we can start in that home school and we stay there, they generally stay, but that moving back and forth and going to different places and different kids in different schools, whether private, public, homeschool, et cetera, that's tough. So again, let's continue to make that a priority. I think, that's it, sorry.
All right. Let's stop some.
I'm good. Mention the others.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
You're good?
Yeah.
You're not talking too much? Go for it, okay, all right. No, I like you, I'm looking forward to seeing the facilities plan that you said they're, they're working on, that'll be interesting to see, you know, and see what we want to prioritize, so that, I'm, I'm in agreement there. Excited about the communications audit and being able to have some tangible things to, to focus on, I'm looking forward to hearing about that more deeply at our work session in a couple of weeks, and, and congratulations on the, the positive things that she had to say, and I'm excited to see what we're gonna do with the, with some of the new ideas. Went to the convocation, that was so exciting, that was like such great energy in that room. I don't think, that was actually my first convocation, because last year I had a conflict, I wasn't able to go, and it was the first one that you guys, you said you had done with everybody in the same room and, and since, you know, before COVID, and so fun to see everybody there, and that energy was really exciting, so. So, I hope that energy, you know, everybody's taking that energy into the, into the school year and try to, try to maintain that energy as long as you can, and that positivity, so thank you for that, because, you know, everybody feels it, and I'm sure in their, in their buildings too, and the kids feel it, and it just, you know, shows everywhere, so thank you for that. Good luck, we have several new principals, one in the room, that, new, or two, two, two in the room, the new principals this year, so I hope everything's going well for you, please, you know, I know you're, the administration's supporting you, we, we support you as a board as well, so, you know, make sure you're utilizing all the resources to help you transition, and we're here to support you. And that's all I've got, and everything that Audrey said, all of those things, oh, and thank you also, Audrey's been my buddy for the last year and a half, she and I drive to these conferences together often, and we've been to just about, I mean, Audrey, I think's been to everything, every meeting and, and conference that the South Carolina School Board Association's put on. I've had a couple of, of conflicts where I haven't been able to go, but, you know, we've been right there, learning and, you know, learning how to advocate for our district and learning, because, you know, we're not educators, we, we may be parents, grandparents, community members, but, so it's been really great, Dr. Newman's usually at most of them as well, he was here this past weekend at the law conference one, so we get some time to, and, and Wanda was there this past, this past weekend as well, and, and Mr. Govan is always there because we know he's the, the president-elect of the South Carolina School Board Association, but really appreciate you guys encouraging me to go to those and be in there. and be in there with me because I think it makes us all better. So, okay, now I'm done.
Lauren?
I'm excited about our three new principals in Lamar and I think our attendance is up at all three schools this year. So speaks well for them. Congratulations. Let's keep it going. Just how are we on?
The Jeffords report.
We are holding steady at thirteen certified teacher vacancies right now.
I know we lost a couple recently.
Well, technically they're still with us until we replace them.
Okay. If they leave and we don't replace them, they lose their contract or possibly?
Another conversation, yes, sir.
That's another conversation to have, right?
That's right.
So people can't just be pulling out.
That's correct.
The day before school starts or whatever.
Thirteen's pretty good. That's, that's one of the lowest ones.
Yeah, we typically start with forty-nine.
We appreciate what y'all do. Thank you.
And we want to make sure we keep them.
That's right.
Well, I don't really know. I was just going to say that I pretty much agree with everything everyone has said and I'm not going to prolong this, so I'll move on.
All right, I just have a couple of comments I want to make. First of all, we had two really good reports tonight. One was Cognia, the other being our communications things. And I kind of think they work hand in hand together. I mean, I think to the point of, you know, why do we do the Cognia? We, we have to have accreditation. We have to have, we are in the business of educating students. That is our number one priority is educating students. And so we have to have some type of accreditation to do such and that gives, this gives us the stamp of approval for that and thus, because that's what the state of South Carolina has chosen for us to use. As to the other things of highlight, how we highlight student growth in measures that are not academic, I think that pulls in our communications piece and this is where we can highlight our sports programs, our kid, you know, the programs that we, you know, the different things that we do offer our students that are not strictly measured on a MAP test or SC Ready or an end of course, but the things that, the other aspects of learning that goes on in the twelve-plus years that they spend with the Darlington County School District. So I think those were two, two very good reports that I thought paired very, very well together. Just from my opinion. The other thing is into the piece of our communications. For those of you who did not get to attend our community engagement events that we had one at, in Darlington and also one in Hartsfield, those were excellent. I want to thank Mr. Danny Hug for his participation in the role that he played with that and just advocating for the key for careers program that we're doing, the ascend program that's moving down into our fifth grades. And it was just a, what the district is doing for workforce development, I think is, is pretty remarkable. And as I, you know, as we go to some of these conferences and we talk with other districts, I think we're well ahead of a lot of school districts in that realm and how we are looking at developing, you know, our workforce, whether they, you know, stay here with us or they're looking forward. And so I thank Mr. Hug's participation with that and Dr. Newman, I wish we'd had a little better attendance, but hopefully we'll offer some more and get that out. I think, Jamie, I think you also had Mr. Scara spoke at the Rotary concerning our AI work, you know, the, the big, you know, AI and the, the challenges plus the, or as he is looking at it in his house, he's projecting as opportunities that, that we are presenting here for our students. So a lot, a lot of good things going on in the district. Looking forward to a very positive year and thank you all who worked together to make all of this happen. So that was enough. That brings us on to our personnel actions. I get a motion for personnel actions as they are there with the addendum. I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Have an executive session. Am I going to do that? Ms. Kelly, would you get a motion to move into executive session?
So make a motion that we move into executive session to the personnel matters and contractual matters.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? We'll move into executive session.
I, Mr. Govan made the motion to come out of executive and it was second by Ms. Kelly and it was approved. No actions were taken, no votes were taken. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
You can adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
Thank you all.